November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. This is the year of the full disclosure by the school to apply.
I. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. The delivery of other for which it stands, one nation under your God, invisible, delivered in this world.
Roll call, please.
Mayor DiMatto.
Here.
Councilman Bronkers.
Present.
Councilman Catalano.
Here.
Councilman Graziano.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Here.
Councilwoman Schuber.
Here.
Councilman Yasi.
Here.
We also have Mr. McQuirt, Brianna Smith, business administrator Michael Sondermeier, and Borough Attorney Paul Sullivan. This meeting is called pursuant to provisions of the open topic reading law adequate notice of this people's advertising to Herald News on January ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy disposed as available to the public and on file for the Office of Municipal Clerks. As first day fire code, I am required to remind you of two emergency exits in council chambers. The main entrance with you entered through and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, we're going to exit, enter through the door and down the stairs and out. Any questions? We do not have any non-agenda items tonight. Do I have a motion to open up early public comments?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone wishing to speak, come on up to agenda items.
Lincoln Lake eighty-six, Van Van. This is about resolution, I guess, two thousand twenty-five eleven, there was going to be transfers. For the clerk, you're taking away ten thousand. I'm not sure why. Property maintenance, you're taking away most all of that salary. For the beautification, you're taking away two thousand. J-tree, you're increasing it by fourteen hundred. Streets and roads, increasing it by thirty thousand. ACO salaries is eight thousand. Other expenses is, sorry, three thousand for salaries, other expenses are eight thousand and gas is two thousand. Now, I'm assuming for borough clerks, because you're definitely turning, maybe the salary is lower for that. Is that correct or not?
Is that under salaries or is that from just a number question?
No, but it said right here on the salary.
I'm bringing the whole thing up, so I looked at it earlier. Excuse me, one second. I'm assuming that's from you being a non-military.
I don't know answer to that.
No, that'd be on. I'm not hundred percent sure if we can get you the answer to that. These are just normal transfers that we do every year. This is the time of year you're allowed to do transfers, but more line item to the others to.
I don't understand that.
So that's what we're doing. This is nothing unusual.
Okay, but some of them are a little bit strange. The planning board, you're increasing it by two thousand. Bringing up, I guess, what it was last year. But last year, all you paid was thirteen thousand. So I realize it's going up, but they're going two thousand.
Well, we've, the planning board, I believe, has done a lot of other work with the projects that are coming down. Our, I'm assuming the planning board attorney and the boroughs, we are having involved in certain projects going on. The most recent one is Hilltop Terrace, where the wall barriers had to be approved, so we had to get more input. We're just doing a lot more work on those.
That wasn't the, well, that was the.
No, no, it was a guy on Hilltop on, I don't remember Hilltop, that's putting a retaining wall in his backyard.
The borough was also.
And then he's, and then he's got to bring in.
That's the plan.
Then he has to bring in the dirt to go behind the wall. So he had to come in and the engineer got that way involved. It's very true.
All right. Even though the new plan.
Yeah.
On the first J-tree. I don't know why that's going on. The other expenses. About fourteen hundred.
We could have used that to take trees down during the year. Borough trees that are on people property in the right of way. So we've taken a lot of trees down in the last three years that were in the right of way, the borough properties that are dead, ash trees. So that number went up and I'm sure we took that out of beautification to two thousand and put it towards that.
Well, that beautification went two thousand, fourteen hundred went to J-tree.
Fourteen and six, when it went to one of the lines to fill out whatever she had to fill out and make it work. Property maintenance went down thirty-two thousand, his salary came out of the construction line, but we also, we anticipated X amount of money from our shared services with construction and we took in more money than what we anticipated, so we were able to pay that out with that. With that.
But you decreased the zoning and property maintenance salary by thirty-two-four. It was thirty-seven-six, you reduced it by thirty-two-four, you put in five thousand dollars in there and I doubt that's always being paid.
No, you just said we took it from the construction line item.
It became from our shared service money.
Yep. Right. So we budgeted money for his salary, but now we're able to take it from a different line item for a shared service agreement, so line item. So this is what's left over in his salaries, we're using that money and moving it somewhere else. We didn't.
Using our property maintenance guys.
I'm assuming, but I mean, but his property maintenance guy, he didn't work for other towns?
No.
So then how do you take it out of shared services?
Shared service comes in and offsets salaries. So we take it into construction and it offsets any salaries in construction. And he falls under construction on problem.
The roads and maintenance salaries went up by thirty thousand and it already had gone up by thirty thousand, so we're on the total of sixty thousand from last year.
They could have, and that includes OT and stuff like that, which we had to work in OT from assaulting events last year to overtime now with.
Last year was four hundred thousand.
No, I say last year, I say beginning of the year.
You're talking January, February.
Yeah, a lot of snowstorms, a lot of OT that we ran with the guys on the streets and roads.
Animal control went up by three thousand.
That would have been OT as well, could we have people that were out. So we have ran a lot of OT and ACL site.
There's what, three of them?
And other expenses went up by eight.
We left and we had nobody.
Other expenses went up by eight thousand, why is that?
Yeah, that one I'm not, I have to ask what went up and what we spent it on. I know we did work down the animal shelter with windows and roof repairs, so I don't know what.
We did a fence.
Yeah, we did, what, we did fence over the last year.
That was the year.
That was last year.
Anyone else wishing to come up? See, no more motion, close early public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do have two, two matters in executive session tonight. One is a matter of negotiations and another one is a personnel issue, but there'll be no action taken, just when we get to that point for executive, we will have an executive session tonight. Reporter committee, before I start, congratulations.
Thank you.
I hope that you had, you were not here our last meeting because, because you're my grandparent now.
Yes.
So congratulations, very nice.
Thank you so much. Okay, so for the Tri-Borough, the numbers that I got from Gail were that we had a hundred and eighty-five calls and last year, the calls for October were one forty-six, so substantially high. And for the library, Ally, they did have their very successful, over a hundred people doing pianos and I did not attend because I do like it in my backyard, but it was my anniversary and I was in California. But they made a lot of money and the date for next year is not available and she did want to say that next year is the library's one hundred, one hundredth year and they're planning a lot of special events for that on the day. And then the senior center, as always, they have a lot of different events online, Teddy Bear Tees coming up on November eighteen. December first is their Golden Age Club party at Fort Bellows. They throw a party for the police department, that's December fifteenth. The senior center, the kids go to, they have a little concert, ten thirty, December seventeenth. And also, they're having an indoor erotic sale and they're doing, it's on November twenty-third from nine to three at the senior center, clothes, pre-owned things and they're asking, if you did want to get a table, you can ask Pat that's taking care of that and.
One reminder, so EDC and REC are working really tirelessly at this point for holiday travel that's coming up December thirteenth, from four-thirty to seven at Sloan Park. Could be a good event, we're going to have some more vendors that are selling goods this year, it's a little bit new. Instead of an ugly sweater contest, it's just going to be an ugly clothing, you know, kind of holiday contest, so you can bring other things, other sweaters.
I wore that last year.
She did, she got a title to it.
You can't lose anything.
Bring, bring something additional, that would put it up. And then there'll also be some food trucks, playing the games, they're going to be doing dances again, which I think was pretty successful last year, so it's a good time. So I hope everyone can make it again, it's December thirteenth, around four-thirty to seven at Sloan Park. And that's all.
Besides holidays, so the only thing we have left for public events for the rest of the year is the menorah writing. That date is still to be determined, we're waiting to hear from the gentleman that runs it. Let's see, more help. I'd like to congratulate our new president, Anthony Catalano. We've had discussions with the county on education, educating businesses on our new ordinances, specifically the ordinance for the smoke shops, discussions with the county on educations in the schools. We have health screenings every second Tuesday of the month from two-thirty to four P M. in Borough Hall of Council chambers. That is for blood pressure, blood glucose, cholesterol, hemoglobin. For the uninsured and those enrolled in New Jersey Family Care Plan, there is a monthly children's wellness clinic. This is for state-acquired vaccinations and physicals. There are four locations, all your information is on the Borough website under the Health Department page. There are also free eye and hearing screenings, specifically vision glaucoma, eye screening and hearing. For appointments, you can call nine seven-three-eight-eight-one-four-three-nine-six. And that's for residents who are uninsured or without insurance. Ham radio, Pompton Lakes thirteen, ham radio group is looking for licensed amateur group radio operators in and around Pompton Lakes, they already joined the group, that includes Bloomingdale. They meet several times per year for in-person meetings and training. They hold weekly net check-ins every Sunday evening at eight P M. in which all licensed operators are invited and encouraged to check in. Should anyone want more information on the amateur radio operators, you can contact Mike at MikeV zero-three-one-one at protonmail dot com, or you can message Pompton Lakes Cert on their Facebook page. This would be wonderful for any Bloomingdale residents that are ham operators. We would like to, you know, start really getting in touch with those ham operators to include them in future planning for emergencies of rural Bloomingdale. Search and rescue. On November sixth, search and rescue had a hiking party, an entire party that was having trouble in Morgan Green. They left here around five-thirty, they didn't get back until about seven o'clock and they, the one hiker in particular was really struggling with the dark and the rocky terrain. And if you have an opportunity to look at the picture on, that we posted on our social media page, it was rocky terrain. So again, our search and rescue went out and with Passaic County, the group was, I think, four members from Bloomingdale, three from Passaic County, and they did a wonderful job. Our search and rescue now is recognized by the state of New Jersey, so they're getting called out and two incidents in other towns, which is wonderful for them because it, you know, it helps with the training and it also helps with coordinating training with other organizations like West Milford Search and Rescue or the County Search and Rescue or the state. So good for them, they're really doing a bang-up job. Rave, our emergency notification system, if you have not signed up, you can go to the Borough page, it's on the homepage at the bottom, right-hand side. And if you'd like to edit your profile, you can go in there as well, edit your profile and sign up for our opt-ins, which is listed there. The Borough is closed November twenty-seventh and Thursday, November twenty-seventh, Friday, November twenty-eighth, and also twenty-fifth of December, everybody knows that. Ravey's schedule, the next scheduled dates are Wanaque, November fifteenth from nine A M. to eleven A M. at the DPW Garage in Wanaque and November fifteenth from one P M. to three P M. at the Kinnon DPW Garage. DPW, leave leaves at the curb in a leaf bag and the DPW, we've been collecting them multiple times a week. Also, the DPW is open on Saturdays from eight to twelve, that's for everything but garbage, that's especially important for a lot of people during the holiday times when you start getting your stuff. What? What?
John.
That's it, John?
Is it?
Yeah.
Right, nothing between. Hey?
Nothing to see.
Comment?
Nothing to report there.
Keep going.
Go put it in there.
Nothing to see from Mayor.
Under, for me, I had, I was invited to a presentation yesterday by Mayor Martinez over in Butler called Catch You Later, it's from the Catch You Later Foundation, it's about impaired driving and distracted driving, which was hosted by a lady named Pam O'Donnell. It was really eye-opening for her. What happened with her is her, her husband's a school teacher and she had two little girls. And this person, as the story was told, was in New York City, having a good time. And then on his way back, he was all over the road and they have documentation of this person coming through the Holland Tunnel, hit the wall and coming through. At the end of the day, her husband and her daughter, who was in the backseat of her car, her husband's car, was at a toll booth down in about Hoboken, getting off the, getting onto the New Jersey Turnpike. This person came in the opposite direction and rear-rended her husband's car, who was at a det stop and he was doing about fifty-five to sixty miles an hour and wind up killing both her husband and her daughter. But the moral behind it, she was, now she, to make it a positive out of it, she goes around state to state and talks to people about her experiences and how to avoid it and she talks to high school kids that are just getting their license, so they understand what the ramifications are of doing drugs or alcohol or even just texting while you're driving and how things could turn in a second. Her husband was a school teacher, I believe down in Hoboken, and the fire department on scene were students he had in previous years, so they knew who it was and that's how they kind of figured out to get in touch with her, she was at work. So, and at the end of the day, when she got the phone call at work, she asked to talk to her husband and they couldn't tell her, the dispatcher could not tell her over the phone, because by New Jersey state law, you're not allowed to do that, they just told us she needed to come. So she said, if I can't talk to my husband, let me talk to my daughter. And the dispatcher said, she said that the phone went dark. They didn't know her daughter was even in the car, because the back of the car got hit, her daughter was between the backseat and the front seat and she was a child in the car seat, so they went back and they found the daughter. So by the end of the day, it was really heart-wrenching, but she's turning us into a positive because she has another six-year-old daughter, at that time, this happened ten years ago, that they're, you know, stolen a therapy, but they talk to people and they're making people very aware of what's going on. So I was, it was nice for Mayor Martinez to invite all the mayors from the local towns from Catalon and West Milford and us, it was really eye-opening. So if you have kids that are going to drive or at that age where they can, you know, have a conversation with them, how bad things could turn in a matter of seconds. That was eye-opening for me, but I really got a lot out of it last night, over there.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Linda Bennett and the B B C O, this, throughout town, they have all the pantry and the.
Toy drive, yeah.
Toy drive items. There's a box up front here, there's boxes at, I know the football game had it, Glenwell Gardens is going to have an event and you could bring toys there and there's spiral all over town and, you know, today was Veterans Day and there's a lot, there's the whole thing with the shutdown and the government need. There are food pantries, of course, Bloomingdale has a wonderful food pantry, the Methodist Church in Bloomingdale that can always collect, I think there's a food pantry items here in front of the library you could collect, you could drop off. And the Church of Nazarene, I know, has a food pantry and it's very important for people to, this time of year, the scarcity of money and resources to, what are we going to give to give?
And also, senior, he's had a food pantry also, I was talking to Pastor Chuck today about that and he says, people are calling him to donate, he says, more than has ever happened, he's really thankful for our communities to start donating to all the food pantries, but he said, there's businesses contacting them that are making donations for the food pantries. And there is, the toy boxes are in several businesses throughout the Bloomingdale area to drop toys off for the kids for Christmas, so it's that time of year where the giving is starting, which is great, it's fantastic. Today's Veterans Day and like I said this morning to the people that were there, just goes today's Veterans Day and we recognize our veterans, no matter when you see a veteran, you should just say thank you. Whether it's today, next week, Monday, Sunday, church, whatever, you see a veteran wearing a hat, just say thank you, because they really protect us.
And Mayor, they brought up fundraisers on November twenty-third, it's Saturday morning at Applebee's, between eight and ten, it's on the Borough website.
Yeah.
I just saw it and if you're available, it's fifteen bucks, you go have breakfast at Applebee's.
It's the twenty-third and Sunday.
Sunday, it's Sunday the twenty-third and I also believe they're doing, down at Tastley British, another fundraiser down there.
October twenty-second.
October twenty-second?
Forty-eight.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We go back.
Wait, 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 it might have passed.
It's tonight.
It's tonight?
It's tonight, sorry.
And they're doing the research.
It is October.
The research. Likely money for research across America.
Yeah.
The old one, I'm sorry, we posted the same, the raise that you just talked about for Applebee's was posted the same day as the fish and chip, the fish and chip was October. That's, that's.
She talked about that.
Sorry.
He also talked about that, he wrote it up there, they might be doing it again.
It is tonight.
It is tonight?
He said tonight.
Okay. Okay, all right. That's all I.
The ice roll, day game.
Oh, yeah, Butler playing Kinnon Friday night, I believe, and Butler. I know there's a war between the two mayors, all right, which is, which is great and I'm not going to tell you where they're going to go, but I think it's a local establishment on Route twenty-three and a quarter apart, Old Y, twenty-three. The loser has to buy wings and, and the losing borough has to hang the women's Borough flag in their council chambers for that, so Butler is not going to lose to Kinnon. All right, so that's Friday night, which is great, I believe you have to get tickets online, I don't think you can buy tickets, you just walk.
Yeah.
Okay, which is fantastic.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I wanted to add a comment about the fundraiser, Van.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to put on the record that on the twenty-second of November, we're going to be doing a Fill the Fleet, I believe it's going to be held at the Butler Police Department, there's going to be information online on Facebook about it. And then the following Saturday, we're going to be doing a Fill the Fleet here in Bloomingdale for the B B C O, so people, if they have a toy, they could also drop it off there, bring the kids, and I think there's going to be some, we're hoping, some fun things.
Should we get that on our website?
We should mail a flyer, I'll get it on our social media. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, item number nine, resolution two thousand twenty-five eleven dot nine, motion to approve the consent agenda. So move on.
Second. Mayor, just a question on that, we're taking Isaiah Rodriguez off by resolution.
Okay, so we're only doing the one.
Just one.
All right, everybody understand that?
Yep.
Any questions regarding the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Bronkers?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
Schuber?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes. New Business adopts a resolution number two thousand twenty-five eleven dot nine, authorize the transfer of appropriations. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Bronkers?
Yes. Just so the people in the audience know, when we, when we do these transfer appropriations, there's only a certain time of the year, you're allowed to take it from one line item and move it to a different line item. We do this every November, normally we'll do it on Friday morning, because it's just a quick yes, because we're just moving funds around, it's not, it's not increase the budget or change in the budget, it's just moving monies where, where needed and it's all recommendations from our CFO to do this, so this is the normal process. Item B, adoption of resolution number two thousand twenty-five eleven dot ten, Board of Education Recreation Lease, this is our lease, so our agreement with the Board of Ed regarding the two fields, the Martha Bay Day School Field and the Walter T. Berg and, and, you know, we can do the maintenance and use it for town events, or if they have something scheduled, we have to know about and we can use your fields. This is just a new contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions?
I'd just like to thank the Board of Education, we've been going back and forth about three or four months on this, with the deal superintendent, with attorneys and all the insurance reps. I just sat down last week, it was a compliment from Bronkers and myself and a former mayor, all this way here, and Charles Caravello, the president, and can't do it.
Okay.
Agreement, we're a good place on it.
Okay. Thank you guys for doing this and Dave and Mike also for the whole time and I appreciate it. Okay, roll call, please.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Bronkers?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes. Okay. Okay, so a motion, open play, public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up, please come up.
I'm in Halley eighty-six, Van Van. I want to address several comments that have been made, I'm doing this in writing because I was, it suggests that you were writing, have been made before land and writing by the Democratic Council members, other council member left. These remarks involve my involvement in the development of Federal Hill for housing in Bloomingdale. There have been repeated statements claiming that I personally sued the borough to prevent court-ordered mandated development and loss, which allegedly resulted in borough experiencing delays or even millions of dollars and taxpayers incurring legal expenses. Additionally, it's been alleged that Republican candidates have opposed Federal Hill development from its inception. And then I is one of their leaders sued the town to stop the project, causing a six-year delay in progress. These statements imply that, were it not for our involvement, Bloomingdale would already be benefiting from increased tax revenues. To clarify, a lawsuit in question was brought by the Committee to Save Federal Hill, a political action committee that was formed in two thousand thirteen with the goal of preventing quarry and Federal Hill. While I was a named plaintiff, I was not the sole initiator of the suit. The committee was supported by donations from Bloomingdale citizens and a Gulf Fund account. In January two thousand fourteen, the council established an affordable housing zoning district on Federal Hill. It's important to note that the lawsuit was filed ten months prior to this action and was not intended to completely stop the development. The administration at this time, primarily composed of Democratic Council members and a mayor, are fully aware of these facts. They resumed Federal Hill, which is an environmentally sensitive area, to include quarry overlay, even though the land was designated for the conservation easement. Subsequently, the administration entered into an agreement that permitted development of the property. Current Democratic elected officials continue to assert that my actions have caused the borough millions in lost revenue and resulted in unnecessarily losses for taxpayers. These accusations are unfounded. I've addressed these claims in previous meetings, yet they persist. It appears to be an. It appears there's an ongoing effort to place blame for the delays in completing the project rather than addressing the actual challenges being faced by the council. The council had been negotiating with the developer for years. They have increased density from 300 to 500, even agreed to warehouses and a hotel. They also received substantially less dollars than initially promised, the taxpayer, from 10 million to 4 million. But they have not moved the project further, and this situation has nothing to do with me. All of these discussions have taken place behind closed doors. The public has had no input, and me, as a member of the public, has had no input. On respect to the request of Democratic council members, stop making these falls and misleading statements about me and my Republican colleagues. If such inaccurate information continues to be spread, we may be compelled to pursue legal action to defend our reputations.
Your word. Anyone else? See no one, a motion to close?
So much.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Like I said before, we do have an executive session tonight, and there will be no action taken. Do I have a motion to go to executive session?
So much.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
... that are being built around your town, and that's just going to continue to go up. The council should follow the example of many of the towns around us and put a cap on what a landlord should be able to raise in the case of a rent.
Rent control.
You know, absolutely. I believe rent control should be instituted, because I have a feeling this guy is not done raising my rent. I have cancer, okay, so my doctors are essential to me. My wife is totally disabled, almost, she's housebound. She was poisoned by the toxins in Ponton Lakes by DuPont. So she's lost 50% of her hearing, 50% of her eyesight. I mean, it's just a nightmare. And I have no way to afford another increase of anywhere near that magnitude. I mean, Ed was a very strict landlord, but he was also very fair. You know, like, yeah, I'm sorry, he passed, I thought I heard that. I mean, I started there in 2008, paying $1,550 a month. And 15 years, or 16 years later, whatever it was, when the new guy took over, I was paying, as I said, $1,790. So his increases kept up with, you know, the basic cost of living increases that I get from my social security, I'm 72, you know, that my wife gets. My daughter is also at this point disabled. We had to ask her to bring her fiance into our home in order to make the $3,000. My son, my grandson, lives with us. He knows you, Mr. Mayor, you know him. His name is Michael Bichetti, and he's on the fire squad. He has, he has three jobs. He works three jobs, volunteers for the fire department, and is going to school to become an engineer in college. I don't ask him for rent, because I don't have the money to help him with school, but I can not charge him rent so that he can spend the money that he makes on school. And we have nowhere to go. Now, the other three, the other three units that live by us are all paying approximately the same amount. One was a family, the other two were just a combination of adults, okay? They left. The family that lived there, they knew a real estate agent, they were just lucky. They had a, they picked up a rental that's, from what I understand, just right down the street from here, for like 1,800 bucks, and it was the same size, it was a house. So we tried that, and everybody around here is, I mean, even Patterson, you know, the rents are $3,000.
Yep. It's all in state.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm, I'm just really begging the council to help the families in your town, stay families.
Well, first of all, we have to, first of all, we have to look into, I do not believe, and I don't hope to this, is there is the substance of rent control in New Jersey. I don't think New Jersey at this point even allows it.
Yes, they do.
I will look into that, but when I'm reading, no municipality, county, or other political subdivision, state or agency, or instrumentally therefore shall adopt any ordinance, resolution, or rule, or regulations, or take any other action to limit, or diminish, alter, or impair any exemption to a form of subvention, which is rent control. It does, I don't think New Jersey lets you do it.
No. I'll just. Yeah, no, I, I understand.
Internet's not always right.
Yeah.
All right, but I will look into it, but just in the back of my head, because I think this has come up before, is that New Jersey does not allow it. Would things change going into the future with what's going on in Trenton? I don't know.
Unfortunately, in Trenton, there is only one thing that a judge can do from Trenton. The terminology, unfortunately, is, it's a one-word terminology, and I'm sorry, I have short-term memory loss, so trying to bring up a word sometimes is hard for me. I may have written it down. If you can just give me a second to see if I...
I don't know. Um, yeah, that, um, Dawn, the, the, I thought we could only increase three to four percent, like...
I don't know what it is in that one. We're not like, so that's a little bit, but Doris, I just pulled up the statute, and it says very clearly that a municipality can't adopt an ordinance to regulate it.
But, the local, for a local ordinance, it says the amount is often tied to factors, consumer price index, percentage is three to four percent.
Have you, have you applied for any place that has affordable housing?
Well, I'm looking right at this issue, so I, and I'm not going to apply any further because I don't, you know, I don't do this.
It's the way you listen. It's the way you listen. I don't know, I'm just, I don't know how many Bay Area sections out in town is, there's...
Like, that increase, if you're saying you paid $1,790 to $3,000, that's 67 percent. And here it says examples of CPI is more, more than four percent.
I don't know what you're reading, I'm just going to go, you know, we have to, I, I don't, this is due to us, so I have to look into this. You can just...
Just two other quick things.
Sure.
I appreciate the call.
Send me an email, so I have your email, and then, why, go through Mike?
Yes.
You know?
I'd be happy to, yes. I'm just wondering, because the cable TV, are we still tied to Optimum?
Um, we have Optimum that goes through the town. Are we physically tied to them? You can get Dish. Verizon is not here. I think...
Isn't it Optimum now OTs though?
It's the same thing, yeah. That's still under, yeah, Optimum, OTs is the parent company.
Yeah.
And then you also have, if you're in an area for T-Mobile, right? Has video?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have 5G, you can look into them, you can get them.
Yeah, I already tried Dish, but every time the cloud went over, I lost them.
Well, Verizon, my experience, because I used to work for Optimum, go back to this cable vision, is Verizon stopped building in our area because it wasn't profitable to, to do it that time. I have seen them in Ponton Lakes building, so if, are they coming here, you have to get ahold of them. But Optimum is the only cable coax or fiber that is in the area.
Okay.
Okay.
And the only other thing was the water.
What about?
It's horrible.
Did you call anybody and say, "Come look at it," or, you know?
It's the whole town, sir. I mean, the water stinks horribly, it has sediment in it, it's just, it's horrible. And with the cost?
As I tell people, it's not what's coming in that costs a lot, it's what's going out. Your sewer bill is through the roof.
Yeah.
Right. We only have four towns that are on the sewer authority, and they, we share the cost with everybody.
Yeah.
And we only have X amount of users on, that's why we got to build.
That's another thing that the landlord man and Ed add to our bill, is we have to pay the water and sewer. Don't do that in other towns.
I don't know.
Yeah.
We don't pay water.
All right, sir, I appreciate your time and the council's time.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.